Are we all set?
That should be everybody.
Great, thank you. Good evening. I am calling this public hearing to order at 6:00 PM. In accordance with the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, MGLC 131, Section 40, and the Boston Wetlands Ordinance, Boston City Code Ordinance is Chapter 7-1.4. The Boston Conservation Commission will hold a virtual public hearing this evening on August 21st, 2024, to review the following projects to determine what conditions, if any, the commission will impose in order to protect the interests of the public and private water supply, groundwater, prevention of pollution, flood control, prevention of storm damage, protection of fisheries and land containing shellfish, and protection of wildlife habitat. This evening's hearings will be followed by our regular meeting. And in accordance with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, we are conducting this meeting online. To ensure public access to the deliberations of the Conservation Commission, the public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. Additionally, the meeting is being recorded. If you do not wish to be recorded, please turn off your video. Members of the public may have an opportunity to ask questions, provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing *9 and *6 to unmute yourself or send your questions to staff via email at cc@boson.gov. For the record, I am Michael Parker, Chair of the Commission. Could staff please identify themselves?
Elena Itamarri with the Environment Department.
Pede Hernandez with the Environment Department.
Julio Hussein with the Environmental Department.
Great, thank you. Okay, I'll call the role of present commissioners. Commissioner Sullivan, are you here?
I don't believe he's joined.
Yep, I see his picture, but he's not here. Commissioner Laney.
Amy Laney.
Commissioner Wilson?
Mike Wilson.
Commissioner Condon?
Condon, through Vingadum.
Thank you. Commissioner Richmond?
Alice Richmond.
Okay, thank you. Okay, first item on the agenda tonight is Notice of Intent for DEP File Number 0061772, Boston File Number 2021-010. Applied for by De Cullis and Company LLC on behalf of Stephco Holdings Company for the proposed demolition of an existing structure in construction of eight housing structures located at 90 Allendale Street in West Roxbury. Resource areas 100-foot buffer to inland bank waterfront area, riverfront area. This has been continued from the September 6th, 2023 hearing. And so to set the table here, we asked for peer review. Peer review results have come in. I do see, or I saw a response from the applicant responding to the peer review. It got into the file yesterday. So I'm going to admit I haven't had a chance to fully review it. We also got numerous public comments today. And again, skimmed over those public comments, but was not able to spend a lot of time with them. I'm sure the other commissioners are in the same boat here. It feels like, and Elena, help me out on this, feels like what we should do is have a presentation from the peer reviewer?
I think that would be best.
Okay, so who is here on behalf of, is it STV?
Yes.
Great.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. So I'm Ali Sodawi, and I'm project manager with STV consultant alongside with Preeti and Dustin. Preeti and Dustin, would you be able to quickly introduce yourself, please? Preeti?
Good evening. My name is Preeti Sriraj, and I'm a civil engineer at STV.
And I'm Dustin Kirksek, also a civil engineer at STV.
Great, thank you. Okay, I'll leave the floor to all yours.
Thank you. So yeah, so today we are presenting the 90 Allendale Peer Review. As you mentioned, at the September 6th, 2023 public hearing, the commission voted to obtain an independent peer review and continue the hearing when the peer review is complete. So STV was selected to perform the peer review, and today we're presenting the major comments and recommendations from the peer review. As you mentioned, we submitted the memo to the commission that has all the major and minor comments as well, and recommendations as well. Next slide, please. So just a quick overview of the project. The site consists of existing two-story, single-family home, approximately two acres of land. The single-family home associated with asphalt driveway deck, patio, and landscaping. For utilities, sanitary force, main, water, gas, and overhead electric lines are connecting all to the main utilities in Allendale Street. Once you enter the property, it stops down from Allendale Street towards intermittent stream which has three culverts. So the NOI proposed the demolition of the single-family resident and construction of eight units housing and four separate duplex buildings and a patio. In addition, a new driveway and utility connections alongside with permeable pavers, one-water quality unit, new stormwater detention chamber, and native plantings. And now I will hand it to Preeti to go over the peer review comments. Next slide, Preeti.
Thank you, Ali. So as the commission is aware, the resource areas impacted are 100-foot buffer zone and 25-foot riverfront area. The four units, as you see in the picture to the right, number five, six, seven, and eight, and the detention chamber and parts of the maintenance way is proposed in the buffer zone limits, and that is highlighted in cyan. I believe erosion-controlled blankets are proposed to protect the slopes. However, if not maintained well, does have the potential for adverse impacts such as sediment transport to the stream. So we recommend a condition, if possible, to perform the work in low-flow months of the year, like avoiding springtime, if possible. We did not see any major impacts to the 25-foot riverfront area being proposed. The waterfront area is noted in cyan, oh, I'm sorry, in purple line, which is 25 feet from the riverfront area, and that is also impacted by the project. A portion of the detention chamber and proposed grading adjacent to the residential units are in the waterfront area. Next slide, please. So we have reviewed the plans for compliance with the Massachusetts Stormwater Standards. We have provided those detailed comments in the review report. However, in this slide, I would like to present basically some of the comments that stood out. Specifically for compliance with Standard 1, we noted that several pipes have steep slopes, and we request that a calculations be provided for pipe velocities. There was a stormwater storm scepter unit or a water quality unit that was proposed. Seemed like multiple pipes were connecting into that smaller unit, and also it didn't look like that could handle the flows that would come into that structure, and maybe an upgrade to a next higher unit may be proposed. And as a result, we also noticed that there are some minor errors in the stormwater report. So that could probably, should be corrected for determining the updated velocity and flow that would be used to size the riprap apron at the outfall. Now, for compliance with Standard 2, because those errors in the hydrocat output were noted, that typically occurs when there is insufficient storage in the stormwater detention chamber. For a given storm event, this was noted for the 100-year event. So we request revised calculations for sizing of the detention chamber so we can confirm compliance with Standard 2. With regards to compliance with Standard 4, we request that applicant include a long-term pollution prevention plan as required by the standards. We did not see that in the stormwater report. And for Standard 10, an illicit discharge compliance statement should also be included in the report. With that, I will pass it on to Dustin for other comments.
All right, next slide, please. So the maintenance plan for the detention chamber called for periodic removal of sediment that accumulates. However, we noticed that there are some tree plantings that seem to prevent any access to that structure. So I think that needs to be cleared up, how that structure is going to be maintained. You can see in these images, some of the plants showed what appears to be a maintenance drive or path leading down to the structure. But then on the landscaping plan, that is occupied by trees and other plantings on the top image. Next slide, please. Our landscape architect reviewed the invasive plant management plan and had some recommendations, including listing specific products for the cut stump treatment, including a permanent ground cover restoration plan for when invasive species removal results in bare soil treatment for a pre-treatment for areas of known invasive cedars, and an integrated pest management plan should be included in the invasive management plan. Next slide, please. And then finally, the stormwater standards require an erosion and sediment control plan view. We noticed, we did note that there is a narrative included with the stormwater report, but it's not shown on a plan. And there were some inconsistencies between what is shown on the plan and what is written in the report. So we would request that some of the details and stormwater BMPs that are shown on the plans be included in the narrative and vice versa, that everything that is included in the narrative be shown where it will occur on the plan. We would also expect to see some sort of performance specs or even specific products listed, and how those need to be maintained and installed so that they function properly.
Thank you, Dustin. And by that, this concludes the major comments on the peer review. As I mentioned earlier, there are other minor comments in the memo that we submitted to the commission. And if common resolution meeting needed to address those comments, we're happy to attend that. So, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. That's very helpful. So I guess bottom-line question to you, Ali, and the team, is based on your peer review, if the issues that you have brought up here are corrected, some of the minor, some seem more than minor, is it your opinion that the project meets the performance standards under the Act and the ordinance?
Preeti and Dustin, I would, any would say?
Yes, we do believe that if some of the comments that are being addressed, so basically, the stormwater management standards are addressed, and if that shows that there is no impact into the waterfront area, that is minimized, and if there is erosion control that can effectively work as it is intended and do not cause any sediment to go down into the intermittent stream, we feel that the Act and the ordinances are adequately addressed.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, okay. Elena, as I've noted before, we have a response from the applicant here. Do you have, I don't know if you've had more time to look at it. What are your thoughts here as to proceed? Did the, in your mind, let me put it this way. In your mind, what you've seen from the applicant, did it respond to everything that was brought up in the peer review? And also the DEP comments, which I think were from 2021, so I'd hope they would have been addressed at this point. But, so what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, my recommendation, I know that there are folks from the 90 Allendale team on the call, and I was thinking that this might be a good opportunity for them to at least speak to some of the materials that they were able to submit earlier on, and then at that point, give the commission a chance to ask any questions. And I know that there are also folks on the call who had submitted public comments. So that might maybe be the best sort of path forward for now.
Okay, so who's here for the applicant?
Jim De Cullis, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Joining me is John Pulchini, Counsel, John Rockwood, our biologist, Katia Potziadalo, and Stefanos Estratoudakis, the applicant.
Okay, so I thank you. And so I think it makes sense, Jim, for you and your team to address the results of the peer review. And I will try to follow along in your letter that came in yesterday. Does that, that make sense to you?
Yeah, sure. I just didn't know if it was going to be exhaustive, Mr. Chairman. I just, I just want the commission to know that we've addressed everything in those comments. I'd be glad to go over each one of them if you'd like. But my thought is that maybe just to save time, maybe if we can coordinate with STV off the public hearing, maybe before the next hearing, and just make sure that everything's addressed, it might be more efficient.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I'm thinking the exact same thing. It feels like there should be a conversation between the professionals here, and then maybe we would be in a better position. Because as Preeti said earlier, to demonstrate compliance with the Act, certain measures have to be taken. And I'm not sure that we're in a position to be hashing that out this evening.
Yeah, the technical comments get pretty deep, Mr. Chairman, and I just, I just don't think it's worth the commission's time to get into the weeds.
I appreciate that. I just wanted to give you the opportunity to say something if you wanted, but I think that makes perfect sense. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, there was just one thing that was not in the comments, and I think it was Dustin that brought it up, was just some specific products that he mentioned at the very end. And that wasn't evident to me in their comments. Could Dustin just clarify what that was regarding?
Were you referring to the comments on the invasive species management or on the erosion and sediment control?
I think it was erosion, Dustin, but I'm not sure.
Sure, so typically what I've seen on NOI plans is like a sheet of notes saying, you know, basic performance specifications of the products you're using, whether that's for the erosion control blanket, maybe it would be for flow velocities that, or slopes that it needs to meet, have basic guidelines on when products need to be cleaned or removed, maintained, things like that, how sediment is going to be disposed of.
Okay, and specifying products or alternatives that might be approved by the engineer or the commission?
You might not need to show a specific product, but at least give performance criteria for the products that you would expect to be using.
Okay, great. And yeah, we can talk about that off hearing.
Sure, yeah.
Fantastic, thank you. Okay, before I go to commissioners, I know that we have members of the public who would like to comment. So if you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. And let me go to the commissioners who are present. So Commissioner Laney.
So I guess one or two comments on the, more specifically on the invasive plant management plan, if that's okay to address here, because I think it was brought up as part of this peer review. I think on the herbicide products, we would prefer to see something, a wetland-approved equivalent of the garland that's mentioned. And another comment was that lily of the valley was noted in there within the area of garlic mustard. So requesting that that get also an herbicide treatment so that it doesn't spread into the natural areas. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
Sorry. Yeah, I don't have anything further beyond the peer review and so are Paul Sutton's review. I think he's been diligently tracking these things for a couple of years now, which I really appreciate. But yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Condon?
Thank you, Chair Parker. I'm eager to hear from the folks who had comments here, and it's good that they're on the call. And I did go through some of the comments quickly. But basically, I'm just actually trying to understand where we are here. That 2021 Mass DEP comments, have they all been addressed? Is that what I heard?
Jim?
Yes, that's correct, Condon. They've all been addressed.
And then where is, is that including the O&M plan comment?
DEP did not have an O&M comment. Their concerns were just related to soils and some other procedures. And I can detail exactly what those were, provide DEP's comments if you'd like.
Yeah, I'm looking at them. They've enumerated their comments. And number five is O&M plan does not meet the requirements of the stormwater handbook.
Okay, that was addressed in last year's rendition. The August 23 stormwater management report provided an O&M plan, and that addressed DEP's comments in that regard.
And the DEP knows that?
Yes, they received a copy.
Okay, good. That's good to know. I'll just listen in for the rest of the comments, Chair Parker. This is good for now.
Sure, thank you. Commissioner Richmond?
Yeah, I just had one question about the tree, you know, the trees that were on site. Are they going to be removed? I wasn't clear about that part of the presentation.
Yeah, Katia can address that.
We have developed a tree removal and mitigation plan. So we have a tree removal plan on the one hand, and our planting plan on the other hand, to mitigate tree removals.
And how many trees are you taking out, and how many trees are you putting in?
I don't have the summary numbers right in front of me, but I can open it and find out for you in just a minute. It's going to take me a few minutes. Can you come back to me, maybe?
Yeah, we'll have to come back. Katia? They must be in our files too, right? We could look for them.
Definitely, Mr. Chairman.
Here in here, yeah.
Well, I have one follow-up question as well.
Yeah, please.
And that is, as we know, all trees are not created equal. So I'm just curious about the size of the trees that are coming out and the size of the trees that are going in. And if that was something I should have seen or know, I apologize for not finding it.
Yeah, we do have a full tree removal plan that shows the plan as well as a tree table and calculates and enumerates and describes all the trees and their sizes.
Okay, so maybe what we can do is, clearly they're coming back. We can look through our files for it beforehand, and Katia will have it next time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? No? Okay. Elena, who has raised their hand?
Not seeing any raised at the moment, but I'm just going to give the folks a moment.
I don't. Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to continue the hearing?
So moved.
With a second?
Second.
Hey, Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that carries 5-0. Okay, thank you to both teams. Looking forward to the next discussion.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Notice of Intent for DEP File Number 006-2003 and Boston File Number 2024-026 from AECOM on behalf of the Department of Conservation and Recreation for the proposed resurfacing of an existing parking lot located at Seven Water Street, also known as 75 to 100 Taylor Street in Dorchester. Resource areas or land subject to coastal storm flooding, I'm sorry, flooding, in areas of critical environmental concern. Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. This is Tom Keel from AECOM. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, and I am joined, as always, by Tom Bolton of DCR.
Great. Where is all yours?
All right. Thank you very much. So we have filed this notice of intent to resurface the parking lot at Seven Water Street. It's located immediately adjacent to Joseph Finnegan Park. As you can see, it's the property that's located to the north of Water Street, that large parking lot there. It's approximately 275 feet away from the bank of the Napa River. Next slide, please. This will give you a better idea here. So the red outlines the extent of the property itself. As I said, 275 feet away from the river. All activity would be occurring within the fence line. There's what I believe is a 10-foot-high chain-link fence surrounding the property at the moment. That would remain in place, and no vegetation along the perimeter outside of that fence line would be altered. Next slide, please. And as you can see here, the floodplain in this area is rather extensive. It comes quite a ways inward. These elevations here are based on NGVD 1929, and the same as our plans. And next slide, please. So here's some photos of the parking lot itself. It is in rough shape. It's a paved parking lot, but it's in such rough shape that the asphalt in many places has just been pulverized, and there are visible areas of concrete. Some large swaths of the pavement remain intact. You can see that on the photo on the left-hand side where the trailer is parked. But the photo on the right-hand side kind of has a gravelly appearance to it. There is asphalt there, but the gravel is, what appears to be gravel is really the pulverized bituminous. It's in rough shape, and it's time has come for some maintenance. Next slide, please. So we do have some plans to reduce the impervious cover of the site. We, as you know, when you read through the notice of intent, there is an ALU on this property, and the asphalt was serving as the cap. You know, I won't go too deep into the history of Joseph Finnegan Park, but for over a century, that was a large industrial site. The soils were contaminated with heavy metals and many other items. The state took over, and DCR remediated the area and turned it into a park. And Tom Bolton, who's on the call today, was actually part of building this park after the remediation. So we do want to reduce impervious cover on the site, but we have to put an impermeable barrier down under the gravel and the trench drains that we have here to keep our groundwater from interacting with the soils and the groundwater beneath our site. So we weren't able to come in and do, you know, a large-scale detention pond. There are things along those lines. But you can see the area towards the top of this, we're looking to put in some crushed stone and some under drainage, and then an impermeable barrier under that. And then that will connect to the existing stormwater management. So during small and minor rain events, we won't have runoff from this area. It's likely just to slowly infiltrate, evaporate over time. What doesn't evaporate will come into the stormwater system there. But the end result will be less water entering the stormwater management system and discharging overboard, and cleaner water entering that system and discharging overboard. Next slide, please. So just some cross-sections here. You can see the piping system that uh, we tend to install in that uh, gravel area. And it may be difficult to read at this scale, but those thicker black lines um, on the details in that upper right-hand corner are the impermeable barrier that will be um, installed underneath. We will have to test this material um, prior to disposal in potential reuse. Um, we always say potential reuse because we're just not sure. But my, you know, my gut is that we won't uh, we won't really be reusing any of this material on site. It's co-mingled with just uh, mashed up asphalt. So we will be testing, uh, excavating, testing and removing off-site for proper disposal. Um, we did have a remedial action plan to deal with the the fact that this site is under an ALU in being regulated by the MCP. That explains that, you know, there will be an LSP from AECom on site um, during the prep work of all of that. So the the installation of the underground systems, removal of the asphalt, um, testing and uh, testing and disposal of the soil. We'll be tracking that and can provide commission, uh, the commission with um, you know, the bills of lading for that disposal. Um, and everything will be done in accordance with the typical soil removal under the MCP. Uh, you know, there there won't be open uh, dump trucks just rolling through a neighborhood where, you know, you could have dust escaping. Everything will be completely covered um, at all times. And that uh, that's the basic rundown of the project and I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Sure, great. You answered my big question while you were putting the liner in. Um, so I'm interested in the um, uh, what the liner is. Uh, is it a geotextile membrane? Uh, I thought I said, I thought it was something about sand, so I'm just.
Oh, no, the the, it has to be an impermeable liner, so it will be a geotextile. There'll be a sand layer. Um, but there will be impermeable geotextile.
Okay, and so the water will get trapped there and then diverted. Um. How, uh, with the maintenance, well, I guess the maintenance for the membrane is uh, no excavation and um, making sure that vegetation um, uh, with deep roots are not planted to penetrate. Is there anything else? I mean, what?
No.
Protect the membrane.
If, if you want to go back to uh, one of the aerial photos, Dee Dee, uh, while we discuss this, uh, that would be great. Maybe the second page of this slide. Uh, right here. So, uh, page two, that we, thank you, Dee Dee. So everything to the right of the site here, I believe there's already that impermeable uh, cap down in the, in those large grassy areas there. And that's one of the reasons we weren't uh, uh, you know, going ahead and offering to veg- have a vegetated swale or anything like that is we don't want any potential root damage occurring to that impermeable barrier under there. Uh, so the maintenance would be coming in, making sure that nothing is growing in the uh, in the crushed stone, removing it by hand if that happens to be the case. But there's uh, no real maintenance to the the impermeable barrier itself.
Yeah, and I assume that's an annual inspection. That'd be part of the AOL, I would imagine.
Oh, oh, yes, yes.
Yeah, okay. So, so are you saying that, um, is that a park to the right? Is that the Finnegan Park? And that has a mem- that is, it has an engineered barrier underneath?
Yes, that is correct.
Interesting. Okay.
Yes, the AOL covers that whole uh, park, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Okay, and so the stormwater diversion, um. I guess it wouldn't affect anything in the park either. I mean, we don't want any unintended consequences, but it sounds like it's um, managed. Um, and there'll actually be less runoff.
Good, that is correct.
Yeah, okay, okay, good. Um, just want to remind members of the public, if you want to make a comment, um, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can also raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to meet yourself or send questions to staff at email at cc@bosley.gov. Um, Eleanor, what do you have on this?
We don't have anything to add um, to this one.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Laney?
Uh, I have just, I think, one question. Um, looking at the grading plan, um, I think in general, it's a fairly subtle slope towards the um, drainage system. Is it worth considering maybe a curb or lower, you know, like asphalt firm that just runs along that um, side that's abutting the the park, um, just to sort of help direct water into that system? Um, just something that I think could be helpful?
Uh, we do have, let's see if it's. So the the way the contours are, they're running, it it will run towards uh, the existing catch basins that are there. So it's kind of, gonna be kind of sloped like a a bowl. Granted, that bowl, it will be almost imperceptible when you're out there, uh, because there's just not a lot of grade change. Uh, but we did, you know, we are wrapping the areas that were lower around this backside to keep the flow from running out that way. You know, so we we took it from the top down to about three o'clock.
And just on the backside of the fence where the park starts is, it's probably six or eight inch, uh, grade difference. The asphalt is at eight point five, the fence is at like eight point five, and then the park starts, it it goes up a foot within about a foot.
Yeah, so if we, um, if you could go to the slide with the plan page on it, Dee Dee, please? Uh, all right, so it's a little tough to see, but there's a thicker detail that says new asphalt cover right in the bottom right-hand corner just outside. And that contour is the ten contour. So that is a foot higher than what's on the site. So whatever is on the site will not be running towards the park. It's all coming back towards that bowl in the middle.
I see. So the grading that's shown on here is the essentially the existing and then that, that's bumping it up when you add that asphalt?
Yes, you're right. And because we're not touching anything outside the fence, it, that grassy area outside the fence is slightly higher. Uh, you know, in between a half a foot and a foot higher than the parking lot itself. So water will not be shedding from the parking lot to the grassy areas.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Wait, thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, I don't have any further questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Condon?
Thank you, Chair Parker. I just, uh, a couple of curiosity questions. Um, the AOL only applies till the remediation is done, right?
Uh, the ALU is the Activity and Use Limitation, so it applies to everything that's out there and this site is part of it. Um.
Right, what I'm asking is, will the?
It's in perpetuity. It it's there forever. The AOL
Okay, okay.
Is is in perpetuity.
Yeah, the limitation applies. Okay.
Yeah, I think what you're getting at is, um, the AOL is um, part of the remediation. It's the final step of the remediation. Uh, so after you remediate a site like this, then you have activity and use limitations to protect the remedy and to monitor the effectiveness of the remedy. Um, that stays in perpetuity or until it's no longer needed. Um, so the anticipation is there'd be no more remediation. It would be a matter now of just uh, keeping these controls on the property until they're um, not necessary.
That's helpful. Thanks, Chair Parker. So it it's a limitation that will apply in perpetuity uh, to the activity and use on this surface after the remediation is done.
Yes.
The, the, how deep is the soil that needs to be removed?
Um, I believe we're only going down about four to six inches for this. Um. Be, it's a, I I think it's part of the remediation. When they did the park, they took off the first three feet of contaminated material, put down the impermeable barrier and then put three feet of clean material on that to restore the grades. So we, we are not sure just how deep it goes in this area. And that's part of the reason we just, we didn't go full catch basin, rain garden, uh, that aspect of it is that we're not going to really remediate this site. We're just gonna cap it with an impermeable layer um, near the underdrain area and with the pavement in the other area.
I see. Now, out of curiosity, you know, I appreciate that the the material, you know, sounds like it's clearly contaminated, will not be reused. What does disposal entail?
Pulling it away to us to a certified landfill. And and we really don't know what landfill that would be. Most likely being an out-of-state landfill. But um, but the s- the the soil has to be profiled and then the landfill has to see those profiles and accept them. Certain landfills have certain pro- profile criteria, so it could go to Vermont. Um, there is actually one landfill in Massachusetts, but it's very really utilized because their profiles are really tight. And then, or it could go to New York or somewhere else.
Wow. Interesting. And one last question. I, did I hear correctly that the grass area is is um, the above where where you say underdrain cleanout, that the grass area adjacent, adjacent to that? It and it's higher, right?
That's correct.
Those elevations are higher curves, excuse me, uh, than the parking surface that will be create, uh, restored here.
So I I heard what you said about water not running from the parking area into the grass area. Does it run in the other direction or is there sediment coming into the parking area?
Not that I have observed. Um, if, Dee Dee, if you could please go to slide number two. You can see here it's slightly higher, but there, this is where um, there is vegetation for screening that has been installed in that area. Um. So it's not, it, you know, it's not a pitch slope higher areas, just uh, it just, it's almost, you know, at at some points a half a foot over quite a run in other areas a foot. So it's not a, it's not a steep slope um, that you would actually see, you know, sheet flow or anything like that coming down.
Okay, that's good to hear. Thank you. That's all, Chair Parker.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Richmond?
I'm sorry, I was on mute. I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I don't see any hands raised. Do you, Eleanor?
I don't see any hands and uh, nothing in the inbox either.
No emails? Okay. Um, okay, so with that, I would uh, entertain a motion to issue the order of conditions and close the hearing.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson? Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Uh, last call for Commissioner Wilson?
Sorry, aye.
That's all right. Okay, okay, carries five nothing. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time and have a good evening.
You're welcome. Take care, Tom. Or Tom's. Um, okay. Notice of intent, next item on the agenda, notice of intent for the DEP file number zero zero six one seven seven two and Boston file number twenty twenty-one dash zero one zero. No. I started at the very beginning. You don't want to go back to the beginning, dude. Okay, next item on the agenda is actually um, DEP file number zero zero six two thousand one and Boston file number twenty twenty-four dash zero two four from twenty thirty, um, no, two thirty Friends Street LLC for the proposed demolition of an existing building and the construction of a new seven-story mixed-use building located at two thirty Friends Street uh, in the West End. Um, the resource here is land subject to coastal storm um, flooding. Actually, it's flowage. Why am I mixing that up tonight? It's flowage. Um, who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Uh, hello, my name is Gray MacLeche. I'm the owner of the property and I'm here with my assistant Jake Dougherty.
Okay. Uh, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone, for um, being with us tonight. Uh, it's a pretty simple and straightforward project. We're proposing to demolish an existing two-story building uh, that takes up the entire lot, which is just over two thousand square feet. And we're intending on building a seven-story uh, mixed-use project with a office space on the first floor and six residential units above. Uh, the new building won't have any uh, basement. Uh, the existing building does. And that's a, that's the quick story of what we're trying to build. If uh, we can go to the next slide, please. So here's just a couple of images. Uh, the first one's the front of the building. Again, it's just a two-story building, has a uh, small basement that's about seven uh, feet high. Uh, it's located in the Bullfinch Triangle uh, section of the West End. And we are in the uh, coastal flooding um, map as you can see in the far right. Uh, next slide, please. Again, just a few more pictures so you can get an idea of the property and where it sits in uh, conjunction with the rest of the properties around it. Uh, as the left-hand slide shows, it's uh, where the red is around it, takes up entire lot. A front picture again, and then this is just a picture of the roof uh, looking with your back towards Friends Street that shows uh, the abutting building on the left, right and behind. Uh, next slide, please. And this is just a shot from the roof uh, looking out towards Friends Street with the two buildings on each side and a picture of the existing basement, uh, which again is about seven feet, two inches tall. Next slide, please. Um, this is the image of the foundation and the outline of the property as it sits on the lot. Uh, we're intending to have a slab on grade construction. Uh, however, the majority of the first level, which is ground level, will be a little over two feet above grade. Um, and there won't be any basement and just an elevator pit that goes five feet deep. Um, and so the foundation system is uh, depicted in this plan. Uh, you can go to the next slide, please. So our foundation system sits on a ductile pile system and those go down to bedrock. Uh, there's approximately thirty-three piles. Um, as the images say, it's fast, simple and safe. Uh, basically, we wanted to design it with this to have uh, minimal impact on both the surrounding buildings, but also the um, ground below. These piles drive very quickly with very little minimum invasion. Um, and they're eight-inch piles that are routed within. And you can also see from this picture that the, you know, the water table is right around nine, ten feet and uh, other than these piles going below, the lowest, you know, thing that we're doing is the elevator pit, which is only five feet below grade. And so, um, most of the we're actually not going to be digging anything out in the excavation. We're actually just going to be removing the existing slabs and bringing fill-in, structural fill-in to uh, make up the difference in grade that we have to come up. Um, next slide, please. This is just the um, first floor plan. Again, the majority of the grade is actually two feet above sidewalk grade. Shows, you know, there's no um, basement and there's no um, mechanical equipment that's below this grade except for the elevator, um, some pit.
Yeah, so Gray, let me um, stop you there. Um, when we get projects in the um, flood zone, um, usually we see an elevations plan that's uh, depicts uh, where the mechanicals are going to be um, located in the elevation. Um, and I'm not seeing that anywhere in the filing here.
So the ele- the electric uh, room is in the back left corner. The sprinkler room is directly connected to that. The elevator machine room is actually up on the roof. And so there's no critical infrastructure below grade. So the electrical room um, meters are um meters are three feet off the floor. Uh, the sprinkler room, uh the pump and everything is two feet off the floor.
Yeah, I understand that, but I guess what I'm getting at is we're looking for the data like um uh what the actual um elevations are. Uh, so what your ground floor elevation is uh and working from there. So is it sixteen point four?
Sixteen point seven is the elevation at the street line.
Yeah.
The uh elevation of the finished slab is nineteen.
Okay, we're gonna need that in the file.
Uh, this is part of the filing that we did do.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not seeing it. Um Eleanor, uh, did you see it?
I'm just taking another look.
I mean, usually, and this must be in the um pursuit of the zoning code in the flood overlay district, I would imagine, right?
Yes.
So usually we see a a form and I understand it looks like you didn't go through. Did you go through BPDA um small project review?
No, we didn't have to. No, it didn't meet any of those requirements.
Yeah, so that's the issue here is usually what we see is the um uh the data generated during the um BPDA review as it relates to the flood zone. And it's not incredibly detailed, but it, well, it's detailed, um but it's, you know, filling out a form basically. And then a um and then a plan with elevations.
Yeah, since we weren't, we weren't required to do the small project review.
Yeah.
We didn't have to.
Okay, so I wonder, yeah, go ahead.
Um, I just looking, so I think that not on the the title page of the plan, but on the first page is is what you're looking for. Uh, I I'm not sure if this is it, but I know that it says that there's the the benchmark. So the benchmark elevation is sixteen point three five and then it has the roof edge elevation marked.
Okay, so Gray, if you could work from that, let's let's take um the base elevation and then if you can tell us um uh with a number where um where the first floor is. It sounds like you have no um subgrade. There's nothing below grade, right? So no basement, no storage, obviously nothing habitable.
No basement, no storage.
So so let's take it from, wh- what is the elevation of the uh mechanicals?
So the elevation of the electric room floor is nineteen and the elevation of the actual equipment would be twenty-two.
Okay.
The elevation of the sprink- sprinkler room floor is nineteen and the elevation of that equipment would be twenty-one.
Okay, those all sound like sounds like they comply with twenty, uh what we're looking for. Um
Well, this was, yeah, this was designed by my architect to comply.
Yeah, so we're looking at uh SLR um uh elevations here, design flood elevations. Um
Correct.
It sounds like you're there, but I'm not sure because I don't have the document to compare it with. Um, so that's that's a little bit of an issue. Um, what about um, what are you doing for flood control?
As
soluble aqua fence, have you given any thought to how to protect um the building and inhabitants in the case of a flood?
Well, it's designed to be above the hundred-year coastal, you know, storm flowage.
Yeah, that doesn't mean it's not gonna flood though, but go ahead.
Yeah, there's, there's some interior things that will happen with the the two egress doors. Um, there's a, I forget the term, the architect used, but there's a um mechanism to uh barricade the flood mat thing uh that to barricade the doors in the in the two vestibules.
And I think that everything else is above that thing. So there wasn't anything special that the architect had us do. Okay, we're we're gonna need to see. Um, my suggestion is we're we're gonna need to get more information on that. Um, so i- i- and um in a form that would be part of the filing, unfortunately. Um
How come this wasn't brought to our attention? Because we we spent a lot of time with this and
Yeah, well, and yeah, I appreciate that. Um, it's just that is the way I'm looking at it right now is this is incomplete until we have that information. So we we can't vote on it um at this point. So so that's gonna be an issue. So did you have anything else to add besides the um the questions I just asked you? And I apologize for breaking in, um but I thought there was gonna be something I could look at quickly here.
I'm I'm sort of at a loss for words. I didn't expect this and uh and I'm I'm still unsure of what you need because maybe it's it's not a requirement that we had the BRA or, you know, the Article eighty documents. So I'm still unsure of what we need.
Yeah, okay. Um, you can check with staff. Um, what what, as I said, um, we're gonna need the elevations. We're gonna need to know about your flood control measures. Um, so we want to make sure that things like with the um building of your building, it's not going to velocitize um floodwaters that would affect other properties. Um, I don't know if you have transformers on the site. Um, probably not.
We don't.
Yeah. So we so we need
System was designed with the the dip piles to not impact our neighbors.
Okay, um So did you have anything else for the presentation before I send it over to the other commissioners?
Um I guess we had to, we have, if you go to the next slide, we have the infiltration system. Um, that's just a typical floor plan up above grade. That's a second, second through seven stories. You can go to the next slide, please. That's the rooftop. There's no green roof. It's a white TPO roof with roof drains that go directly into the infiltration system. Uh, there's no uh infiltration system now. As a matter of fact, I think the the roof gutters go into the uh sewage system. Uh, so with this new new roof system, all the roof drains go directly into the infiltration system, which I believe is the next slide, please. So this is a typical um retention system. All the roof drains go directly in there. Uh, it does have an overflow valve. It's essentially a a four-feet-by-twelve-foot uh galleys uh surrounded by a foot on all sides of one one to two-inch crushed stone uh with a filter fabric surrounding it. And I think I think that was gonna be the the whole presentation, the whole presentation.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, Eleanor, um, wh- what do you have on this, besides what I just mentioned?
Uh, nothing to, nothing to add on that. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just want to remind members of the public, uh, if you want to make a comment, you can um raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the uh platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six, unmute yourself or send your questions or question to staff uh via email at cc@boston.gov. Um, Commissioner Laney?
Uh, no more comments for me.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Wilson?
Um, yeah, my only comment would be is that like, I think we've seen one, one or two of these over the years where they've sort of fallen to a, most of the work is going on well above the floodplain situation. Um, and I don't know how the BPDA or planning department is dealing with that these days, but um certainly from a flood insurance perspective, this is one of those things where it's like it's going to fall under the substantial improvement or substantial damage threshold. Um, so what, you know, I I don't, I don't, not gonna profess to know what that then entail. But in terms of future occupants and, you know, lessies or whatnot of the building, um, that's an important set of conditions to try to meet. So I don't, I mean th- this might be a larger discussion just given between the the various city agencies that are involved and the evolving guidance, feds and um, but yeah, it it sounds like yeah, this is a little more complicated. We need to continue until the architects and the engineers and everybody with their stamp plans are on board.
Yeah, yeah, and great. That that's such a great point. Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Uh, one thing I didn't mention is that um, the reason we need this information as well is um to protect the city's uh flood insurance uh or federal uh flood insurance protections. Um, so, um, you know, and I apologize that uh this may have taken you by surprise, but um it's just something that we we do need. Um, Commissioner Condon?
Thanks, Chair Parker. Yeah, I agree. I think um if it's any consolation, the rigor that is necessary here should be standard, the way we apply across all applications and that's part of what Chair Parker is asking for here. And secondly, it really is about safety. And when we have that assurance that all appliances and are above um like especially, you know, electric ones are above design flood elevation by a safe margin. It gives everyone that sense of safety and comfort that we need, especially when building in flood zones. I did have a couple of questions. I I saw the BPDA approval notice in the NOI. And I'm not sure who can answer this question, but does that not include the small project review?
No, it's a, the design review is the only BPDA requirement.
I see. Okay, and and the demolition of the building, is that because it's in poor shape? Or is it just in general easier to erase and go back to the drawing board? I I realize you, you know, you're removing the basement which I think it's a safety measure. Uh, but why, why demolish the building? Does it not have good bones?
Yeah, it does not have good bones at all. Yeah, it's it's close to, but it it's close to falling down already.
Oh, wow. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Commissioner Richmond?
Um, yeah, I just have uh one question right now, and that is, um what happens if a floodwater comes into the area um below grade, the five feet where that elevator pit is?
Um, the elevator pit is uh water sealed all the way around, so it's a tight um ceiling. So it's essentially like a bathtub. You can't get any water in it. So it's sealed all the way around uh the four sides.
When you say it's sealed all the way around, could you help me out and tell me what it's sealed with and why you think that no water would get in in the event of a flood?
Yeah, so there's a um rubber membrane that's around that. Um, it's a sort of a uh epoxied onto the concrete.
Okay, and is there some um other place that you know of where this treatment has been used to prevent water from going into an elevator pit?
I'd have to ask my architect about it, but that's that's essentially what he has specked out. Um
Uh, well, for i- i- if this gets continued, that would be a question I would like an answer to. And and let's just say for the moment um that the um membrane gets broken or in some way there's water that gets in there. What happens then? The elevator will not work?
Well, the the elevator uh has, the elevator pit has um a sump pump in it. And uh I think that the elevator pit is five feet deep. Um, and so that that sump pit in there is standard and a code for all elevators uh to take care of any water that does get in there. I don't know what happens with a, you know, to that pump with a hundred-year storm. I'd have to ask the um the company that get that is providing the pump to give me some specs on, you know, the volume of water it can uh can take.
Yeah, I mean, I I think all of the comments that you're getting are sort of of the same type. Um, you know, you're you're pretty close to um the the hundred-year storm. Um, and I think we're all thinking, um, especially this week after what happened in Connecticut that, you know, a hundred-year storms may not be the best measure for what is possible. So I think all of these questions are going towards the same point, which is, you know, what happens if um you get that kind of water flow that breaks the seal that does, you know, gets into your building um and and what happens to the safety of the people who are there? So those are my
I understand that. The the elevator doesn't go below the pit level, so that that's at the uh grade and all the um elevator mechanic room was designed to be on the roof of the building just for that purpose, to make sure nothing got damaged in case of there was a flood.
Uh, but does that mean that people who are upstairs on those floors will be able to use the elevator? Or in the event of a flood, it's enough?
I think that's a good question. Um, you know, obviously, there's two means of egress uh designed in this building for the reason for people to get out multiple ways. Um I I think that the um I'd have to talk to the elevator mechanics to see what triggers the elevator shutting down. Um, I don't know that it would sense any water rising, but that's a que- that's a good question for them that I'll have to ask.
Yeah, I I I mean, because once you finish constructing your building and you're gone, um, you really don't know who's gonna be living there. And, you know, whether they're gonna be people who, I mean, forget about whether they're actually dependent on a wheelchair. But, you know, the whether or not they're people who are gonna be um compromised in some way so that their capacity to get up and down the stairs is limited. So I I think that those would be really good questions to get answers to. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I don't see any um hands raised. Do you, Eleanor? Did we get any emails?
Uh, no, I don't see any hands raised and no emails either.
Okay, so Gray, I think you heard our questions. Um, I think you're probably gonna have to go back and talk to your architect a bit. Um, and if you have, um, feel free to use staff as a resource um for, um, you know, clarify, any clarification you need on what we're looking for here. Um, but it's pretty standard. Um, so I don't think it's um, I don't think you're gonna find it unduly burdensome. So um with that, I would entertain a motion to continue the hearing.
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Laney?
Hi.
Commissioner Wilson?
Hi.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that carries five, nothing. Okay, thank you. Um, next item on the agenda is a request for an extension for DEP file number zero zero six one eight one one from Beals and Thomas on behalf of the McClellan Highway Development Company LLC for the um early release site work for the Suffolk Downs redevelopment consisting of surcharging select future roadways and building pads and associated soil stockpiling, structural demolition and removal and temporary realignment of Tommasello Drive located at William F. McClellan Highway in East Boston. Resource areas are land subject to coastal storm flowage. Riverfront area, waterfront area, one-hundred-foot buffer to um bordering vegetated wetlands and one-hundred-foot buffer to bank. Um, Eleanor, do we have a presentation on this? Or is this you?
We don't have slides for this, but I know that there are folks from the team on the call.
Okay, who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Uh, that'll be me, uh, Commissioner. Uh, my name is Mary Kate Schnoice. I'm a environmental planning specialist with Beals and Thomas. Um, you summarized the uh relevant project very well. This is uh intended to get the roadways of the ongoing Suffolk Downs redevelopment to achieve their final grade. Um, the work commenced in September twenty twenty-three about uh and is, has been proceeding. Certain areas have been completed. Certain areas are in progress and certain areas are um have not yet begun uh surcharging to achieve the final grade of the roadways. This is due to a number of different uh things, including the availability of material, planning for other um activities, uh construction and otherwise on the site and uh weather conditions. Um, so the applicant is uh going to continue to pursue the Um, so the applicant is uh going to continue to pursue the project as it was designed and um is respectfully requesting an extension of the existing order for a period of three years. I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Okay, so Mary Kate, I am, um I have to ask this question, but I'm pretty sure we're at this base. Um, when did you receive the original order of conditions and have you applied within uh three years?
Yep, great question. Uh, we received the original order of conditions on September third or fourth twenty twenty one, and we received the, or we submitted the extension. Um, I believe it was August second, so within the thirty days.
Fantastic. Okay, thank you. Elena, what do you have on this?
Uh, nothing additional to note on this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Linay?
I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
Um, yeah, no, my, one of my questions would be is uh you have here that you got a Lomer uh seven years after the original sort of map revision.
Yep.
And how, I guess, where did where did that fall relative to the sort of extensive flood modeling that you'd done on the site versus what you sort of had anticipated?
Yeah, great question. So this original application uh was submitted with, I believe, the impacts calculated as they were depicted on the original FEMA map, which is, I think, twenty fourteen or sixteen. I, yes, twenty sixteen.
Sixteen, yeah.
Um, so the extent of impacts has been reduced from what was approved, not by any change of the project, but by the refinement of that large scale flood modeling that you referenced.
Got it, and.
That makes sense?
Yeah, did you guys calculate sort of what that new, what whatever the new uh impact resource area would be now, given the Lomer?
Great question. I do not believe we did calculate that, but if that is something that uh the the would be beneficial to the commission, we can certainly uh provide that for the record.
Okay, yeah, I I think that would be helpful, cuz.
Sure.
I know you guys spend a lot of time doing your homework on this and use alternative models that might work better for site planning versus broad scale stuff and um, yeah, you're 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 impacted by all of these uh floodplain revisions that are probably going to always be coming through the pipeline, ad infinitum. So
Certainly.
Having a sense of that, that would be good just for the record. Um, and congratulations for reducing your impact.
Thank you.
There you go. Great, thank you. Um, Commissioner Condon?
What reduced the impact? Is it the Lomer?
Yes, that's that is the Lomer. So um I unfortunately don't have an exhibit handy, but um as a result of um a detailed flood study for site specific modeling, the extent of floodplain on the property changed.
By how much?
Oh, hmm, um, oh, gosh, Abby, can you help me out here?
Uh, let me look at while you guys pass other questions. I can look it up, but it was pretty extensive.
It was.
Let me see if I can find the the data while you guys continue to talk.
Yeah, I I believe we had it in front of us when you were doing something with the public path.
It was either the public path. I know we also talked about it for the outdoor um entertainment venue and the central common grading, cuz that area was all taken out of the Lomer. Um, so I I can't remember what we discussed, uh what what project we discussed that for. Uh, I I do believe the commission does have that in their records.
We have it in the files, yeah, yeah. I'm looking for it right now, but.
Yeah. Elena, you don't have the ability to let me share my screen, do you?
No.
Okay, that's fine.
So but it is, I I guess it's your belief that it's significant reduction, right?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, I'd be curious to know, you know, the any kind of metric that you have on that would be good to know. And the extension is for how long?
We are requesting an extension of three years. Um, we certainly understand if the commission wants to to discuss that.
Well, I I think we usually do three, but I'm curious about what you need.
Um, Abby, can you weigh in from a construction perspective?
I mean, I think we'd like to request three years just to give it the flexibility to continue to do the work as it makes sense. Um, just given the number of considerations that MK referenced, including trying to make sure we keep access to the Bowery Presents, which is the music station, excuse me, the music um uh venue, as well as to so provide a little bit of flexibility relative to obtaining materials. Uh, it's kind of, it's hit or miss lately to obtain the correct volumes that we're gonna need. So that's our request at three years.
Thank you. And given the reduction in impact achieved by the Lomer, what is the impact on the project?
So the project was the, in a in a kind of a nutshell, the project design was assuming that the Lomer would be in effect, that the revised grades in effect. So we took it, we already, as a sense, knew that that was coming. It was just a matter of the formal paperwork going through. So everything has been designed to the floodplain elevation, the revised floodplain elevations and kind of the future phases and the the stuff that's under construction now on the rear side um has the measures in place for the vertical buildings uh as if the floodplain was the old floodplain, the old Lomer, the old Lomer maps. So it's a, because we're a project that's getting built over time, we have a little bit of flexibility in how we're doing this. But the roadways uh assumed the the higher elevations, these roadways that we're talking about now, excuse me.
Right, this is what we saw before, right? It's the same roadways.
Correct.
Yeah, and if you remember, Commissioner Condon, um we did not issue an order of conditions until the Lomer became um final.
Right, I do remember, yeah. Thank you, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Richmond?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I don't see any hands from the uh public. Uh, Elena, did you get any emails?
Uh, no emails, but I apologize, I should have mentioned this earlier, just noting that um erosion controls will be updated for this project in the next fourteen days, and then commission staff will um will look for photos of those and review and confirm, but um that's the the only sort of note that we had on this.
Great, and Mary Kate, you're gonna be getting some information to us about the impacts uh that we asked for.
Yep, so I'll um recirculate the comparison of Lomer and the original uh extent of the floodplain and then the calculation of the reduction in impact to LSCSF.
Great, thank you for your cooperation. Uh, so with that, I would entertain a motion to extend uh this order of conditions for DEP file number zero zero six one eight one one uh for an additional three years. Would someone please make that motion?
Yes, so moved, I'm sorry.
All second.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Linay?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Hi.
Commissioner Condon?
Hi.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries five nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Okay, uh, there have been a number of continuances. Uh, continued uh our notice of intent for DEP file number zero zero six one nine six one in Boston file number twenty twenty two three dash zero five one, DEP file number zero zero six one nine nine six in Boston file number twenty twenty four dash zero two one, and DEP file number zero zero six one nine 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 in Boston file number twenty twenty four dash zero two two. The commission uh will now begin its regular meeting. First item in the regular meeting is a request uh for a certificate of compliance for DEP file number zero zero six one seven seven four, Boston file number twenty twenty one dash zero one two for the demolition of a residential building and construction of a new multifamily residential building located at eighty eight thirty nine Saratoga Street in East Boston. Resource areas land subject to coastal storm flowage. Elena, do we have any update on this longstanding agenda item?
We do not have an update on this, so we would recommend that the commission hold off on a vote.
We will move on. Next item on the agenda are administrative updates. What do we have?
Yes, so um first we had an a quick update from uh Alice Brown with the Environment Department regarding the pump out boat.
Alice Brown that used to be with Boston Harbor now?
Correct.
The one and the same?
Alice Brown, City of Boston. Um, hello, Commissioner. I wanted to let you know as it falls loosely under your purview, City of Boston has for several decades um ensured that there would be an operational pump out boat as opposed to most of the landside pump out facilities. If you're not familiar with pump out boats, they serve to visit um vessels that have a bathroom onboard and they pump out the human waste so that it is not dumped directly into the harbor. This was an important criteria um for cleaning Boston Harbor in addition to the completion of Deer Island's wastewater treatment plant. Um, we put out a um request for proposals this spring. We learned that our um previous operator had decided to retire. Um, and as of July seventeenth, all contract materials are settled and the operator is out and operating in the harbor um along with all of the shoreside facilities that are also um part of it. So many marinas offer pump out facilities. Those um typically are just for people who use that marina, whereas this is available to anyone um as well as larger vessels coming in that might need these services, whether they're ferries or other um types of commercial vessels. So we're pleased to have a new contract in place and will keep you posted if any other major activity occurs.
Thank you, that's a relief. Um, what, um, we have another administrative update. I'm sorry, Elena, what else do we have?
We do, yes. We also have a presentation by the Office of Climate Resilience on coastal resilience plans and projects for Boston.
Great. What do we have?
Go ahead, I apologize, Chair. Chair, so I'm Chris Alzgood, and and we used to be able to join you uh tonight as well as members of the commission. Uh, I lead the now newly created Office of Climate Resilience, and I'm also joined by Rich McGuinness, who is the Planning Department's Deputy Director for Climate and Coastal Resilience Infrastructure Delivery. Um, the mission of the Office of of Climate Resilience is really to coordinate and support the city's all government approach uh to the risks that climate resilience and climate change uh 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 so present to the city of Boston. And our interest for being here tonight is really twofold. One, to talk at a high level about our coastal resilience strategy, and second, and primarily, uh to talk about the intended coastal resilience work along the Four Point Channel um following the presentation of a project at two thirty two A Street that uh the Conservation Commission heard uh two weeks ago and that Chair Parker you mentioned in the in the list of continuances a moment ago. Um, Elena, if you uh head to the next slide or let me know if I should be uh controlling the slides.
Oh, and um, sorry, actually, I have to check in with DeeDee. DeeDee, would you prefer that Chris share his screen?
Yeah, that should be fine.
Perfect.
And before we get going, Chris, uh congratulations. Um, you're doing important work, um and we're in good hands. Thank you.
You're uh kind of, what is great is it is a fantastic team, both within the Office of Climate Resilience and across the city, uh including uh the Conservation Commission. So we really look forward to working with all of you and a lot of the work which we are doing uh really directly comes from a collaboration with a number of folks who are who are on the screen in front of me. So hold on one sec while I pull up a few slides.
I noticed you didn't mention Rich McGuinness by name.
Oh.
So any reason for that?
Uh, uh.
I'm kidding, I've known Rich for a long time. I'm I'm ribbing you.
The core part of this, so. One moment. So um, Rich, with uh with great credit to him, great credit again to many of you, um sort of have really formed the work of uh the office itself. The work of the office itself is founded in essentially this timeline of plans that you see on the screen, um really starting with that twenty sixteen climate ready Boston plan uh that charted the impacts of sea level rise and storm surge, increasing uh intensity and frequency of severe rainstorms uh and obviously uh the increasing intensity of of heat uh um uh the city and our residents, and then followed that work in twenty sixteen up with a whole series of um of reports that are both community driven and data informed um that sort of chart how we should be actually responding to this risk. And the work that we're gonna be touching touching on tonight, and that really um underpins the work which we're doing in the Four Point Channel, is a set of plans that looked at forty seven miles worth of Boston's coastline, the entirety of Boston's coastline. And uh looked at how we should respond to both the near and the long term risks that we are facing. Um, that uh as many of you know, sort of uh results in the twenty seventies in a one percent storm with a potential um flood impact on our city and uh our neighboring cities and towns. That looks something like the darker areas that you feel that you see filled in here. Um, so you see a number of um.
Sorry to bother you, Chris. Could you go into full screen and be sure you're on the slide that you want us to be looking at?
Uh, thank you. Um, hold on one sec. Can you see it now?
This is why we let DeeDee do this.
Seriously, yeah. Hold on one sec.
Sure.
Chair Parker, Alice, Elena, can you see a an image of the city of Boston right now? Uh.
No, we, I see a loading.
Huh.
Do you wanna give the controls back to DeeDee? But I'm not trying to be glib here, she's.
Oh, no, that's that's fine with me. Um.
I can start sharing screen a little bit here.
Okay, yeah, that's it, thank you. So I can, as as that is happening, is again, many of you are sort of familiar with uh with the work. If you advance, I think, two slides from here. Perfect. So this image is again, one that that many of you are are quite familiar with, but this is um a representation of what Boston could look like if we fail to act um around uh work along our shoreline um in the twenty seventies. In the twenty seventies, we are expecting by that point around forty inches of sea level rise. And this is the the scale of inundation we'd be looking at uh in a one percent storm or a one hundred year storm. Those areas in uh that are shaded in would be those areas that would see some level of expected inundation. And obviously, uh DeeDee, if you had, if you advanced one more slide, um the, these are areas which, as many of you know, are receiving a degree of inundation today. So you see Tinian Beach um in Dorchester in the lower left, you see a section beneath um the Mokley Bridge. Uh, in the upper left, you see an image from Long Wharf uh and an image from Lewis Street in East Boston in the upper right. Um, all of these uh were taken uh during a storm in the last two years. So while obviously there are uh more significant impacts in the longer term, uh this is something which, as all of you know quite well, our residents are experiencing today. Uh, DeeDee, if you go one slide ahead from here, um it's why so much of our work right now is about accelerating uh the traffic plans we have in place to the actions that we wanna be able to take. Um, and that action really cause calls for sort of a significant transformation of um Boston's uh coastline. And DeeDee, if you hop forward one more slide, um again, with credit to a lot of folks, uh Chair Parker, including uh Rich, as you mentioned before, um a lot of sort of near term action has already been taken. So McConnell Park in Dorchester, Martins Park, uh along the Four Point Channel, um Langone and Popolo Park in the North End are all examples of places where, uh with credit to a lot of partners, our Parks Department especially, um there have been um early efforts to not only protect um our residents and public property and um private homes from uh the impacts of sea level rise and storm surge, but also to do it in a way that actually enhances access to our waterfront um and people's ability to sort of uh connect with the harbor around it. Um, DeeDee, if you head forward one more slide, I wanted to cover sort of two quick things before passing over to Rich to really dive into the specifics of what we wanna get into, which is around the Four Point Channel. Um, the work on coastal resilience, which is sort of one part of the Office of Climate Resilience's work, focuses essentially on these three different uh concurrent strategies. And again, these are strategies which in many ways are being implemented across all of city government. So part of the focus for us is how we are addressing today's storms, how we strengthen our response to flooding, which we're experiencing in our city today. The core part of that um is work being led by our Office of Emergency Management and our new chief of our Office of Emergency Management, Adrian Jordan, um to think about how we are providing greater level of support to our residents to prepare for and manage their way through uh potential instances of flooding. There's a second and a third set of work, which I think in particular are is work which all of us will be collaborating on together, which is the the actual transformation of of Boston's coastline. Part of that, uh which is a huge area of focus for us, is to address those flood paths that uh exist in our city today where we are gonna see uh left unaddressed. uh exist in our city today where we are going to see uh left unaddressed the potential for significant inland flooding uh in our city. Uh, and this is where uh we have sort of sketched out a set of projects um that help to mitigate risk or lower the risk uh in those flood paths by by closing up and transforming our shoreline. That is sort of a subset of areas, though, in our city, um the areas that are at most risk in this decade and next. And so there is a concurrent set of work which we are doing um that we will also want to be engaging with you on, uh which is a collaboration with the Army Corps of Engineers. And through an effort called a Coastal Storm Risk Management Feasibility Study, um we are engaging with the Army Corps, who brings a level of expertise, experience, um and um and financing to be able to do a much more significant um collaboration on strengthening our coastline uh in the face of the longer-term risks that we see as a city. So DeeDee, before passing over Rich, just wanted to show one last slide, which is to give you a sense of um some of the twenty thirty or nearer term project areas. Uh, this is a selection of them that we are looking at, everything from Tinian Beach, a collaboration uh with the Department of Conservation and Recreation that we have been working on um in Dorchester, all the way to the far right of your screen, uh Bennington Street, uh the Revere East Boston border. Um, all of these are places where in the near term, we are hoping to collaborate with partners or directly lead uh a set of work that transforms our coastline. In the middle of this uh is the work of the Four Point Channel. Um, so I will turn it over to Rich, but I I do think in many ways this is the beginning, it certainly is the beginning of the conversation and look forward to uh the ongoing collaboration and feedback with with all of you, um this this commission and each individual commissioner um to make sure that we are doing this work uh in a way that works best for the people of Boston. So I'll turn it over to Rich. You can dive more to the Four Point Channel. Look forward to the uh questions and continued collaboration.
Chris, can I just ask you a question before you go away? Um, the um collaboration with the Army Corps of Engineers, um are are there, is it contemplated there are money available, uh there there are funds available, like ARPA funds? Is there anything in the pipeline?
Great question. So um there is uh funding that the city has set aside specific to that study, but that study essentially culminates in the spring of twenty twenty-eight with what's called a a chief's report. It is sort of a document that actually gets submitted to Congress saying this is is the uh, this is the plan that then gets congressional authorization. That is the thing which then unlocks opportunity for uh congressional authorization for any of the projects that are described in that plan. And I would note, I think that we've been joined by Cassania Aquavio from the Planning Department, um who is a a senior project manager and has been uh one of our point people on the Army Corps of project. Chair, does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. Fantastic. Thank you.
Uh, Rich?
Uh, great. Thank you, Chris. And um, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Um, uh, we understand that there was a presentation by the two thirty-two A Street project for permit um last month or earlier this month. Um, and probably some explanation or description of the city's berm project and what that project could be um delivering for their own sort of target elevation. So we wanted to provide a little bit more clarity. Um, the city applied for a FEMA grant back in twenty eighteen to build a flood barrier along the Gillette property along the um eastern side of the Four Point Channel. Um, that review process by FEMA has taken longer than expected. Since then, um Gillette has sold off properties, including two thirty-two A Street, two forty uh uh two forty-four A Street, um and also fifteen Neco um where the GE headquarters were going to be located. Um, those projects are individually um going through a review process and um are elevating their site, they're building by Article twenty-five A, which is a city's sea level rise overlay district, um but also elevating their sites. Um, uh, it's unlikely they will surpass us in our FEMA-funded project, but just a little explanation um that in the future, there may be projects um that are coming in um with higher elevations that will be part of a a system of defense infrastructure. The commission has already approved similar projects at Clippership Wharf, uh Portside in East Boston, fifteen Neco as well. Um, so they're not independently effective, but they are part of a whole uh of system that falls um sort of follows the presentation that uh Chris uh just went through on our ability to um deliver sound um for resilient infrastructure. Uh, this is an image of the seaport, uh very vulnerable, um areas that'll flood um with the projected forty inches of sea level rise by twenty seventy. That's sort of an apocalyptic image. What what do you do? Uh, while we start looking in uh to the near term uh flood pass, we're we're just going to piece this together based upon near-term risk and and the near-term risks are on that eastern side of the Four Point Channel. Next slide, please. We also have to be concerned about uh monthly high tides, these areas uh of the city that would flood uh with monthly high tides um in the future, king tides. Um, so it's not just storm surge, it's also, you know, the 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 king tides in the future uh that needs to be taken into consideration, not just the storm surge. Next slide, please. And this just is an image of the um eastern shoreline of the Four Point Channel. Um, you can see Vampir to the left, the Gillette Manufacturing Facility to the right. Uh, the darkest shaded area in that flood path are currently in a flood hazard area. Uh, so this area is already at risk for flooding um and more flooding into into the future. Um, next slide, please. So when the city uh published uh coastal resilient solutions for South Boston, it's one of our neighborhood um efforts where we've looked at where the flood paths are located, engage with the community on solutions to protect those neighborhoods, identify where flood defense infrastructure, flood berms are located, how high they need to be, and a general understanding of a design. So this is an image from that twenty eighteen report of a berm uh stitched into the Hundred Acres Master Plan on the east side of the Four Point Channel. Gillette was a party of that uh um endeavor, that that planning effort uh as far as in a butter. They approached the city when this was published and said, listen, you know, we believe in these risks, we're willing to provide a right-of-way for a flood barrier if the city were able to deliver funds. That's what generated our grant application uh to FEMA. Um, so this is consistent with sort of long-range planning. Um, and now we're moving into the delivery stage. All of this information that we're presenting you today are publicly available in the city's um webpage. Next slide, please. So our project, um, you know, is to, you know, protect the neighborhood, the Hundred Acres Four Point Neighborhood from flooding. Um, it's a uh uh a mixture of uh earthen berm or flood wall uh along the Four Point Channel. Um, I mentioned that we submitted an application into FEMA in twenty nineteen and it was identified for further review. Um, we went through um environmental assessment process, including uh going through um MIPA and received a MIPA certificate. Um, in twenty twenty-three, we contracted with AECOM to prepare a conditional letter of map revision and to get to thirty percent design. And that's the stage where we are now, is getting to thirty percent design in the CLOMAR so that FEMA will unlock the funds to the twenty million dollar um project. At least that's what it was um um expected to be um back in um in twenty nineteen. Uh, the PDM FEMA PDM um grant program pays up to ten million and the city's matching it uh another ten million dollars, which is available in the city's funds. Next slide, please. So there's a little bit about what we're we're working on now is um identifying what the permitting roadmap is. We will be back to you. Um, you know, probably sometime next year, once we've received the funds and are moving towards uh the construction stage. So all the um high level of design um and permits needed for construction, but right now we're working on the CLOMAR, uh identifying any environmental concerns, um establishing prod- project costs um and the funding sources. Uh, determining the level of protection. We're designing this to be um at the twenty seventy sea level rise elevation. Um, but for independent effectiveness, um we're modeling it for about twenty thirty, about nine inches of sea level rise. We're also engaging with the stakeholders, the property owners uh for rights of way and other access. Uh, we're looking at some surface infrastructure, including the I ninety tunnel that goes through here. That's this is a challenge to, you know, what we can build here. Um, we'll be looking at interior drainage, um stormwater, um as it relates to this design. Um, structural stability is critical and also public access and community co- co-benefits. It's isn't just a berm, it's something that needs to maintain continuity to the harbor walk um at some level of public realm. Next slide. This is where we are in the timeline uh for our work. Um, the end, the ta- task eleven, we'd like to get there as soon as possible, which is construction, but we're in the survey access permission stage and we need permission from all the property owners to access their site for survey work. Um, and hopefully quick uh quickly moving into uh the thirty percent design, which we hope to have uh completed by the end of this year, um and the submission of the CLOMAR sometime by the end of this year. Um, once FEMA has approved, the CLOMAR um will then uh commence with the additional design work, which will include community engagement, um touching base with the regulators, including the Conservation Commission, um seeking the permits, um and then going out for construction. Next slide. So this is the extent of the berm. It's about twenty-three hundred linear feet of of project area, uh starting up at the north um at the upper right at fifteen Neco, which has already been developed and would be a part of a, you know, district scale um intervention here. Um, that would be a berm, earthen berm moving towards um Binford Street. Um, there would be a a gate or deployable system that would open up Binford Street to allow Gillette to maintain their pump house building and then continue in either a berm or flood wall uh behind the pinch point where the um Gillette Manufacturing Facility gets close to the water's edge um and then continues a bur- berm up until Dorchester Avenue where we have a higher elevation. So that's um the extent of the project that, well, we would be working on. Next slide, please. And this just is an image. Uh, we have a forty-five foot right-of-way. Um, so that's the the easement area that we would be getting from the uh the property owners. Um, so building in earthen berm uh that could accommodate landscaping, green space, um public seating, um harbor walk would remain at its current elevation. Uh, we're not looking to do anything to the seawall. Uh, this would be um inbound of of Harbor Walk. Next slide, please. It's just a section of what the the berm would look like. Next slide, please. Um, it's also that we could look at a elevated wall. Um, we we did consider an elevated harbor walk, but um we need to look at what the condition of the seawall is and how to integrate an elevated harbor walk with the nearby public realm. Uh, it's most likely what we we would consider a wall, uh a knee wall or planta wall um inbound of the harbor walk, but we'll have more details on those designs um next year. Next slide, please. And this image needs to be updated, but this shows you the various efforts uh that are underway along the eastern side of the Four Point Channel. Um, to the right in orange, um that is our project area. So running from fifteen Neco all the way to Dorchester Ave. Um, and then in red, it shows you fifteen Neco. That site is complete as well as five and six Neco. Uh, so we're starting to stitch together um a flood barrier along the Four Point Channel, but it'll be done in phases, almost like Harbor Walk. There's no uh independent effectiveness of what's occurring. We're just using, um, you know, whatever tools we have not to stop building uh this work. Um, Martins Park is another good example of, you know, a district scale line of defense along the eastern side of the Four Point Channel. Next slide, please. So, as I mentioned, Gillette sold off property to various um development entities that are going to build their development sites, but also great public realm, open space, um and making sure that their sites are elevated and protected uh from sea level rise, but also elevating their public realm um to be protected and integrated into a line of defense. I I think going out there in person and looking at fifteen Neco and five and six Neco are great examples of what flood resilient infrastructure would look like as integrated into uh development design. Five and six Neco are great examples on how to retrofit nineteenth-century wharf buildings uh to be protected um from sea level rise as well. Two thirty-two A Street went through Article eighty, went through our design review. Um, and you know, we're very comfortable with their their site design and how they're integrating uh the target elevation, which is a twenty-one point five uh Boston city base elevation. All these projects are required to have modular design so that if need be, um, they could be um have greater additional elevation uh put on top of their design features. Next slide, please. So the the these are just um the site plans for these development entities um and where they're integrating their twenty-one point five target elevations into their site design. Um, most of it setback from the water's edge, um but still preserving public access at a higher level and open space. Uh, next slide, please. And just the sort of status of these projects, the city is pursuing their own sort of like berm project along the Four Point Channel. Um, the hope is that we'll receive the funds in twenty twenty-five and will actually begin the construction. These private developments, other than fifteen Neco, are unlikely to surpass us in the schedule. Um, they will be modifying what we build. What we're building is sort of like interim. It's sufficient. It's effective. It has, you know, public benefits associated with it. Um, but the goal is with these new developments to um provide more open space, better public realm um and the resilient design um into their buildings. Um, so two thirty-two A Street, while it's board-approved, it's unknown what the timeframe would be. It's a lab building. The lab building has softened. Same with two forty-four to two eighty-four A Street. They've yet to come before uh the commission. Um, they have a phased project um anticipated, uh but again, it an unknown timeframe. So it it's possible that you'll you'll see some of these projects, you know, coming before the commission for permits. Um, but it's unlikely they will um commence any work um ahead of our ahead of our project. Next slide, please. And this is just the site design for um two thirty-two A Street and the berm is setback. Um, it it needs to do a lot of things in a really narrow uh parcel. Um, it needs to maintain um the harbor walk, um the South Bay Harbor Trail through the site, then connecting to Binford Street, um an open deployable system at the um Gillette Pump Building and then tying into the flood barrier, uh target elevation that um it either what we build or uh what related bill builds at two forty-four A Street. Uh, so it's a a complicated site plan, but it does what it needs to um in um you know, providing great open space, but also the um target elevation um into their landscape design. Next slide. And this is an image, a bird's eye image of um two forty-four A Street um where that line of defense is that dotted blue line um at the top. Um, so that, you know, this just shows you how that line connects to each property. Um, to the right of this is fifteen Neco. Next slide. And these are the elevations um in fifteen Neco, um which are is already in place. Um, they'll have deployable systems that'll be put in place um ahead of a storm. Um, and their um resilient sort of features are modular and can accommodate um additional height if needed. I think that's it for my slides. Uh, the just some um images of the development scenario um that shows, you know, a greater, you know, landscape, public access. Next slide. And looking at on section of what our berm would look like uh built on its own, um and then how it would be modified. Next slide uh by the private development. Um, with terracing, seawalls, landscaping and other things. Next slide, please. And then this is an image of fifteen Neco. Um, again, it's in place. Our project will tie into its highest elevation um to start forming that line of defense along the eastern side of the Four Point Channel. I think that's it.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Yeah, so you can see what our consternation was um for the, I think it was uh two thirty-two um project. Um, we were in, you know, Stephanie was um very good, uh but we were very concerned about um uh, you know, a private developer building a portion of the berm and how that would fit in with your plans. We just weren't clear on it. Um, so um it was a good discussion. I think we learned a lot. We learned a lot tonight. Um, a few things that um jump out at me here is one, um with these resiliency measures. Um, we do have to make sure going forward with the third phase of our regulations that um, you know, we are enacting regulations that don't run contra to these efforts. Um, I know that I think it was Aladeen um sent some comments DEP about their LSCFS um. They said that right? Doesn't matter. It's late. No one will notice, but their regulations. About, you know, frustrating projects like this. So that's something we should definitely continue to work on. Then the other thing, I was lucky enough to be in Amsterdam over the weekend and. So everybody there seems to know a lot about their flood control measures. And someone gave me detailed description of their pumping systems. And all that. And I realized that in everything that we've we've reviewed. We've reviewed, you know, berms and, you know, aqua fences and things like that, but I don't think we ever talked about pumping. Do we have facilities like that within the city? Will they be planned or is that intentional that? We, there's not as much reliance on pumping.
Boston Water Stewart is working on a coastal sort of stormwater. Analysis. They have some of their first. Run of the model completed and they're going to run a second model and that in in that model, they. They look at a twenty seventy coastal storm combined with a a ten percent rain event. And even with. Our flood barriers and the assumption is that our flood barriers have been implemented. But even with those flood barriers in place, the city still floods because of all the gravitational stormwater systems. So what they intend to do with this model is look at those areas that would still flood and start looking at. We'll need pumping and storage, those two things. John Sullivan's very clear, pumping and storage and start mapping out. Where those facilities are needed, whether they're at the water's edge or further up in the watershed. So that that effort's underway. You know, as a planning department, we need to make sure that where these. Features and these are things that may not be needed right right away. It might be ten or twenty years from now. That we're not precluding locations for pumping facilities and storage facilities. Through our planning efforts. So a lot of work is needed to sort of catch up. With the coastal work, with the stormwater work, but that that second model is is underway.
Great. Thank you. And then final question and let everybody else talk. I've noticed in some areas. I've seen plans for living shorelines and in another area like this, a straight berm. What goes into that decision? When do you decide that this is inappropriate for a living shoreline, but you should have a hard structure?
I I think, you know, the Four Point Channel, the sea walls are on the National Register. They're they're, you know. I I think people appreciate them. They're they're part of the the Boston Wharf District. So it's something that we wouldn't consider here. At this location. We're also, you know, cognizant of wave velocities, wave force and other things where. Nature based solutions may not survive. There was some salt marsh. Put along clipper ship wharf that didn't survive. So I I think we need to look at, you know, the the area. You know. How it is treated or impacted by a storm surge or other things. We certainly like to have more nature based shorebird habitat and other things, you know, where where feasible. But not, you know, in these sort of unprotected areas that are in velocity zones or future velocity zones.
Okay, thank you. Makes sense. All very complicated. Okay, um, go ahead, Chris. You wanted to say something?
Just to note two places where there is sort of a different design approach. Tinian Beach, obviously in Dorchester and Benning Street in East Boston, both. Have, you know. Much more, a much greater focus on sort of a a nature based solution there and happy to sort of. If whenever there's if there's interest by this group to come back and talk more about those projects and. As well about the collaboration with groups like the Stone Living Lab as we look at how we can. Sort of explore and demonstrate the effectiveness of nature based solutions and nature inspired solutions as a as a means to be able to protect the city going forward.
Great. No, it would be great, like maybe annually or whenever to, you know, have a conversation like this. Because we we, as you say, we get hit with all these issues and the more knowledge we have, the better, obviously. Commissioner Laney.
I have a question about the Harbor Walk and the design. Is that? I guess in terms of, you know, signaling that it is. Public space. Is that something that the developers will put their own mark on or is is it? Designed to a standard that gives it a cohesiveness along the whole length? So that people can understand that that is public space and not, you know, part of these private developments.
The city has design guidelines for Harvard with minimum widths. Harbor Walk signage. But we do allow, you know, things like the design of of. Street furniture benches, the landscaping, but there's some level of continuity. The paving might change, you know, can always do a better job. Of of sort of advertising our our public awareness of of Harbor Walk that you're part of this sort of thirty eight mile system. But they are meeting the city's design guidelines. But are able to implement, introduce their own features into the landscape.
I see. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Wilson.
Yeah, no, it's good to see you guys again. Thank you for the. Update here. It's exciting to see the planning get along and. Yeah, it's been a it's been a while in the works. So I'm glad that. We're sort of getting real with some of these details and I think that's gonna, you know, with everything, it's like where it gets a little tricky. I guess one, just in terms of like how you guys are engaging FEMA, Army Corps. All these folks at the same time. Are we developing like since this is a city design project, like a standard set of details, a standard set of things so that like. Obviously, these private developers may or may not go along with what is being proposed, but. Other private developers know what FEMA or, you know, in this case, it's along here with the Army Corps. Are going to accept in terms of like an urban detail, because I know that this is pushing at the edges of any city anywhere. So.
I'm happy to start, Rich. Please feel free to add, correct, but we've we are having. Very regular conversations with both those parties and. I don't think we are yet, but Rich, please correct me if I'm off on this, sort of at a standard detail sort of across sort of all types, but I think as we progress designs here, progress designs and lower, I think we are building towards that. And I think that is a, which is a becomes a helpful standard as we think about the scale of what we need to, but Rich, please feel free to. Correct me around.
Yeah, I know. I know. I think that's that's a great question and and some level of consistency. You know, FEMA will be reviewing our project to make sure it meets their. Design standards and, you know, if a development comes later. And modifies it, you know, that may be on us to ensure that it's it's meeting the same standards, but these are. You know, heavy designed, you know, projects with significant, you know, fill and elevation. Fifteen Echo, this image here. Is accepted by FEMA as part of our district scale. So we're doing the modeling. For independent effectiveness. They, you know, were satisfied with a project like this, but it, you know, it's good to stay on top of of the requirements and not just the elevation. But also the 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 materials that are utilized.
Yeah, no, I mean, thank you for doing that. And I I do appreciate sort of the. Optimism, I guess, of that we've done the Harbor Walk once before. It's good. We love it. It makes what, you know, it's one of the things that makes Boston special. And I think that, you know, the nice thing is, is that, you know, the Harbor Walk had many champions and we're starting to find who those people are now. And which is good. So good to see you, Chris and Rich. But I think that's one of those things where as Mike was saying, Chair Parker was saying, is it sort of like each year, you know? There's the little like inchworm plan that's like, okay, this is. This was the key piece that we slotted in. This is the piece that we're working on. And I think that, you know, definitely pointing back to that Harbor Walk is a way that people will buy in. You know, this is actually really gonna happen. You know, it can be organic and. You know, fits in with the existing urban fabric that we know. And offer something new. Yeah. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Commissioner Conan.
Thank you, Chair Parker. Good to see this playing. And, you know, as you know, Chris and Rich, we. Get to see things only in piecemeal fashion because whoever owns the property does the work that. They can on that property and we always wonder how that's gonna jive with everything else going on. Adjacent to them and everywhere else. So anything slightly larger scale is is good to see. I appreciate this. Now, I wonder, I'm wondering if this presents a new standard for across the city. Or do you just see whatever you're doing here as applicable only to this section?
Which standard is that?
If you think about, for example, you know, there's the. There's the knee wall that you talk about that is on the land side of the of the Harbor Walk. And the knee wall brings it up to twenty one point five, does it? Is that what I saw? I can't remember what.
The the top of the berm is at twenty one point five, but there would be a knee wall at the base at the water's edge. To prevent erosion and just for structural stability. So, you know, this. This is what we're proposing at. This location because the right of way. Is sort of narrow so that, you know. Each project may have their own sort of like individual design. I don't think we would. Utilize this throughout the city. I think each site will require, you know, different. Features. It may not be ample right of way, so it may be just elevating our block. Further. Upstream on the channel. You have the arcade buildings that are right at the water's edge, which may require landfilling. And seawall. So, yeah, I I don't think there's like a typology that like a citywide typology that we're looking to do. It's really, you know, sort of site specific, area specific.
Yeah, I appreciate that. We do share the same harbor. So just from an elevation perspective. We're going to twenty one point five here and not elsewhere. Wouldn't that mean the water will kind of get around and to the back? So I'm just wondering about that because other projects will keep coming in front of us. And what are we learning here that we can use there is is one thing I'm wondering.
So this pro- these projects are going to be built up in phases. They may not be independent. So, you know, it's all, the the goal is to to build these as soon as possible, focusing on twenty thirty flood paths. You know, you don't need to get to twenty one point five for twenty thirty. We're just choosing to do that. So, you know, it depends what flood model, flood scenario you're looking at. But for what we're proposing here, it is intended to be independent and effective. For twenty thirty, twenty seventy. The waters will go around and that's why we need to continue with the Army Corps. And other private entities to to start delivering these long range plans.
Thank you. How how do you prioritize which parts of the city? Gets this kind of investment in design. It's twenty million dollars, you said, right?
That's right.
Just curious.
You know, we we have level of criteria on where to prioritize action. Including vulnerable communities, housing, critical infrastructure. So there's, you know, a series of of things that we consider. But looking at the twenty thirty flood paths versus the full twenty seventy flood paths. That that's our sort of direct focus, existing flood plain areas. And then the twenty thirty flood paths.
Chris, did you have a response there?
Really, just gonna underscore what Rich said at the end, which is the areas that we are most focused on in terms of capital investment are those places which are. Are likely to experience a degree of flooding or either experiencing flooding now or will be experiencing flooding. In the twenty thirties with nine inches of sea level rise. That is not to say, I think, to the question in the chat, that we are not looking at. All forty seven miles of Boston's coastline. It's simply we're starting with the places that are most vulnerable right now.
So one thing I noticed is I think, Rich, you mentioned Clippership. That the part of the Harbor Walk there was completed in twenty twenty one and flooded in twenty twenty two. So what I'm wondering about is it's it's great that. The public realm in these properties will be raised. If you can go back a couple of slides, I had a question about us. Where you showed where the city berm is and then where. Yeah. So so you see how in this. The if the terrorist kind of set up here, if you go to the topmost point of it. When when the Harbor Walk is flooded, that's as far as people can go in order to stand on dry land and look at. The water, right? If we're talking about public access to waterfront, which is what the Harbor Walk is about and. It's it's what chapter ninety one is about. So I'm wondering that when we build a Harbor Walk right along the waterfront, it sort of is the first thing that goes underwater. Because it by definition, it's on the waterfront when the water rises and either acute or chronic rise. But if this level of increase can be brought all the way to the waterfront, that that's the current waterfront. That would ensure public access to water, not not so marginally, but more radially. Right? This is not my idea, but I'm I'm just wondering, is this not something that we can think about? So that people can have access to water even after it rises.
We we are, we are looking into that. And, you know, we're looking at long wharf specifically for resilient study. And would like to redesign Harbor Walk along the downtown waterfront. And throughout the city. So that it remains dry during astronomical high tides in the future. We're not looking to protect it from from storm surge. You know, most people aren't out and shouldn't be along the water's edge, but is there a minimum elevation to consider for? Harbor Walk moving into the future. And I think that elevation is like thirteen. It's N A V D eighty eight. So it is something that we're considering.
I see. Yeah, that's good to know. If you go to the previous slide to this. So this shows what the city does. And then I I guess the developers come in and fill the rest. Why would the city have to do anything at all? This doesn't seem that much more than what the developers need to do. Why? Why can't this be left to development?
It it that's a good question. Well, originally, there weren't any developments proposed here. It was Gillette saying, listen. We're gonna just maintain our parking lots, but it is a flood path, you know, not just their property. It goes over their property into the neighborhood. And that's what initiated our project. We are. You know, there's a challenge that if we're relying on private development to build these things out, we're relying on the market to build it, you know, the market is. Is slowing down, so it's possible that. These projects aren't implemented within, you know, the timeframe of of the future flooding.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. Just a couple more points. It seems like we are coming up because it's government action. Ensuring larger picture of protection and more proactive, longer term protection. It seems like we're sort of like coming up with a standard, but somewhat organically. I wonder if we could add. Signage also to be part of it. So anytime anybody comes out, they learn why this is happening. And so that they're also prepared and to protect themselves as opposed to just making it look like, oh, it's a nice thing. Because, you know, sooner or later, we're gonna have flooding. So that's one thought and seems like manager treat is kind of out of the vocabulary and maybe out of the religion even. So given that, I wonder how, I mean, most of us are not going to be around for the twenty seventies, I imagine. But we there will be more and more signs of how. Climate change is getting worse and worse and what's really happening. What is the mechanism here to learn from what happens in the next decade to update any of these these plans if needed?
Happy to start, Rich, please. Cassandra, please feel free to add. On the, kind of to your first point, and with credit to the Parks Department at Langone Park. At McConnell and at Martin's Park, there is some interpretive signage there, sort of about the infrastructure and and I appreciate that point. It's something which we should. Continue to explore and incorporate as part of these projects going forward. I think there are opportunities for us through things like the Climate Action Plan Update, which, as you know, is sort of planned for the year ahead to think about how we. Sort of adjust, learn from what we have done and adjust going forward. There's also, I think, the importance of evaluation of as we do more and more implementation. To then. To Commissioner Wilson's points, we're potentially take some more common design standards to your points or think about what our our design objectives are. And I think each of these sort of. Steps of implementation allow us to be a little bit. Steps of implementation allow us to be a little bit sharper about the work which we're going to do going forward. To be ready for twenty seventy and obviously beyond.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Rich. That's all, Chair Parker.
Thank you. Commissioner Richmond.
Oh, yeah, this has been really fascinating. I thank the people for really good work and and easy explanation and I have no further questions.
Fantastic. Okay. Gail, this is the our regular meeting. But if you have a quick comment, why don't you go ahead and unmute yourself?
Hi, thanks, Gail. I'm I'm. I just signed in, so I really kind of lost the the. General focus of the plan here, but when people are talking about planning for twenty thirty, I mean, it almost seems like it's around the corner. Why are we not just curiously asking to plan for twenty seventy?
Hi, Gail. It's a great question. We are. We are planning for twenty seventy, but we're moving to action, actually building stuff for twenty thirty since it is around the corner. But we do have comprehensive plans that look at the twenty thirty flood path, twenty seventy flood. Flood pads in some level of of design and location of where these actions are needed, but the the planning is focused on twenty seventy, but. For the sort of deliberate action, we need to start at the near term flood paths first.
Okay, thank you. So just one last parting thought. I think it was either Commissioner Wilson or Commissioner Condon brought it up about the priority prioritization. Of where the measures go and we've talked about this. In relation or in regards to future regulations as far as having. Environmental justice principles built into the regulations and I did find a few years back. The California Coastal Commission had a good set of E J considerations. And I think I passed them along, but they have several provisions regarding, you know, making sure that environmental justice communities. Have proper evacuation, you know, as a priority for evacuation, making sure that, you know. Emphasis is placed on protecting homes and not just looking at the value of property. So, you know, the seaport, you know, one condominium building in the seaport might equal. You know, three or four hundred homes in other neighborhoods. So, you know, it seems to me that's another place where, you know, we'll be collaborating. As we go forward. So with that, thank you very much. Appreciate you taking time out of your evening. To brief us. It's much appreciated and good luck and we're always here as a resource.
Thank you.
Take care. Okay, last item on the agenda, acceptance of meeting minutes from July twenty fourth and August seventh. I did not get a chance to review August seventh and Eleanor, I don't know if Commissioner Herbst had looked at July twenty fourth yet.
No, so we we were expecting that we are going to hold off on those until.
Yeah. Okay, okay. So then our last official act of the evening is a motion to adjourn by acclamation. Anybody object? Okay, fantastic. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks for mentioning those California standards, by the way, Chair Parker.
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
I was trying to pull them up and I could only find San Francisco's, but. You know, San Francisco's not everywhere.
Yeah.
Reminded.
And Condon's background is not everywhere either. Still don't know where he is. Yeah, yeah.
Build a bigger beach. That's the answer.
Okay, okay. Good night, everyone. Take care.
Thank you all.